Nine forty and with just the assessable units. Uh, shown on the map, it yields an assessment amount of forty-two twenty per unit. So that'll likely be adjusted. I wouldn't expect it to change more than a couple hundred dollars.
So if you change it on around to the primary being on Old Viking supposed to it. And we reduce the width twenty-two. Add in the overlay of the access, the street access. If it came down three hundred dollars, it's thirty-nine versus forty-two, I mean it's a little more palatable. You know, we've already heard when there was rumor that we were investigating this last year. There are some on Old Viking that are opposed. Anybody who drives it, especially in the winter, I would imagine would love anything we do to improve it. We know we're gonna get some pushback on this one. Or I would anticipate pushback on this one. Now you were saying if we were to look at ditch work, that would add a lot to it?
Yeah, generally if you are, if you add in ditch work, you're also replacing culverts. Particularly driveway culverts. When you replace driveway culverts, now you're also cutting and removing, say, the first twenty feet of each driveway. Depending on what the ditch work entail, it could add tens of thousands, if not a hundred thousand or more.
I think for the most part that drainage works pretty good. The only part where the water then comes out on the road is by, uh, in the corner there by ice and shacks and just to the west there on the south side. There's no, it's a berm section in front of ice and shacks and to the west there, there's really no ditch and no berm, it's just pretty flat.
Is that somewhere on the north side here, Randy, by the historicals?
It's gonna be on the south.
Right by Jasper on the south side.
I think there's a stretch here on the north side too, somewhere here where there's a berm.
Some of the threshing show on the south side.
Well, by the cemetery there.
And there's not much of a ditch all through here. Generally, when ditch work is added in, it's considered a, you know, a more major project and, uh, generally ditch work is included in reconstruction projects, uh, not in, in overlay, which is generally a surface improvement.
One of the things we learned on when we did the salt was the green acres, so all those larger parcels here, is that gonna be a green acres issue as well?
I would imagine so. Um, generally, I don't read tax records, but I, I did obtain this information from GIS. Uh, there are a couple of different classes of property. There's residential, single family. There's agricultural property classification and then agricultural exempt agricultural. My guess is that the exempt agricultural properties are in the green acres program. Uh, so number nine. Which is exempt, which is one of the threshing show properties.
So just one of the threshing shows is exempt?
Yeah, the other ones show up as agricultural. I don't, I think we'd wanna, uh, try and check with somebody at the county tax records and, and ask them to, they're the ones that clearly have the information, so, um.
When it show agricultural agricultural, what does that mean?
Well, that's just a, um, a summary, so I think some of those are green acres. I mean, I think that's what it's indicating. I'm looking at the website here. So like, um, I'm looking at number, Scoukwest piece, is it twenty-six?
Yeah, no.
So that's forty acres. Yeah, see, that's homestead.
That's homestead?
Egg, oh, egg, homestead vacant land.
Most people, most people won't use that exemption because the assessment don't go away, it's just deferred and it compounds interest. So I think most people will use that, it's very rarely.
I think, if I recall correctly, the, the, I mean, there's almost not a choice for them to, as long as they're in the green acres tax deferment program, the assessments are deferred until they.
Harold Jorgensen was on their project and he paid his, he didn't defer his assessments. I think it's a choice. That's an option for them, if they don't have the money and don't wanna pay it now, they can defer it to a later date when it's developed or the farm's sold off and the kids take it over or whatever. But that can be quite expensive, that's an expensive decision for them to make too, if they defer, it don't go away, it just.
Right, if it's five or six percent interest, I mean, after twenty years, it could double.
So they have so, so many agricultural categories. I mean, they're differentiating between agricultural land homestead and rural agricultural homestead vacant. So, I mean, there is a list that describes all these that could help you too.
Like a threshing show, there's one moving across and there's two on a parking lot?
No, they're parking on the big parcel now. They, they maybe, I don't know if they're partially tax exempt as a public, you know, use, like a church or something.
I think they're a nonprofit.
So in order to get better numbers, don't we need to get those answered then? I mean, the green acres, we don't know if it's a choice, but we need to know, we determine the Buddhist supposedly is assessable. But four, four historical association, that'd be big before, before it came out. And then we need to make a decision on, on whether we're going to assess or delay assessment on the bigger agricultural parcels. I think we decided that Ford Brook to the north wouldn't be worth the fight, do a parcel on. I think we need to know which ones aren't assessable though and, and make a decision on, do we want to do a defer assessment on the agricultural lands that might develop.
I think we would have that there as an option. I would guess that the residents or that our paint are gonna want that deferred assessment on the larger lots. But to the public process, if they don't want that, we can, we don't have to do it that way, kind of let it up to them.
I still think we need to know which ones aren't assessable though.
Well, I think they're all assessable, just some of them have, they have their, on green acres, they can defer that assessment. They have to pay it.
Yeah, but the threshing show, the four, there's four parcels for the power association.
Are there any others besides, I see Larry Scoukwest owns two next to each other.
Well, the, the, now then, the power association, that is not a public entity, correct? It's, I mean, it might be set up as a nonprofit, but it's still privately owned? Is that?
Um, well, it is the power association, I guess. I don't know, we'd have to see what the, let me see if it says anything on here. We'd have to talk, yeah, to the assessor about that one, I think, for sure. So Attorney Rupi did say it was okay to assess churches and stuff?
No, it was a private religious.
But see, I don't agree with that, uh, differentiation. You know what I mean? Cause really, anybody could be a member, they could choose to be a Buddhist or a Catholic or a Lutheran or whatever. So generally, when we're talking land use, we do kind of put those all into one, the same category as a public, or we call them semi-public use. But.
I think he was basing it off the statute, the state statute and how it was written in there.
Yeah, and so maybe you can assess a church property then.
No, because of the way that the tax exempt, oh, how their, their tax ID or how their status was, that there was something in that that you couldn't.
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
For the Buddhist, he felt you could because it was a private, um, privately owned.
Oh, cause it was owned by that gal, yes, yes, I see, I see. That is a different ownership status.
Joe, I had a question, I was considering too, we were talking about Ford Brook. What would it be reasonable to pave that while we're doing this? We got the equipment under doing the overlay. How significant a project would it be to take that cul-de-sac and pave it at this time? Include some assessment for that, then we're not going down there to have to grade that cul-de-sac. How big a deal is that? I know we're just talking overlays on Old Viking, but.
Well, is there, would there be, I guess I haven't looked at Ford Brook at all. Joe, do you know, does, I mean, is the road pretty stable?
Road's good, yes.
So it'd just be a matter of shaping it and paving it and ditches are there and, there's no ditches?
Ditches suck. But we don't really have any trouble with washing it out or anything.
Well, there's only four parcels on, on that, and so I, I mean, it's, it definitely wouldn't be a, a small number, you know, anywhere near the, the four thousand dollars per parcel.
You're saying that that would be significantly more for them?
Boy, I mean, I, I wouldn't be surprised if it was between eight and ten thousand dollars per parcel. Another discussion that the city would wanna have before doing that is, you know, it, it sometimes makes sense to have a higher city contribution on roads that are paved and you're, they're remaining paved. But going from gravel to pavement, you can have a different assessment policy or different percentage that the city pays versus being assessed.
It wouldn't necessarily set precedent that we'd have to do this every time, but Joe, are you grading anything else up in that area?
Ford Brook to the south.
Ford Brook on hundred, ninety-eight, hundred ninety-nine, about forty-seven.
I think again, you know, the, the idea here that that's the only way for those four houses to get it out is on this Old Viking and we've got the equipment there. Does it make sense, even if it's a higher contribution by the city, to get it paved and be done with it? And then a, a portion of this would be assessed to them and maybe not in the same as the overlay. Try, try and bring in their assessment cost in line with what people are paying on the overlay and the city pick up a little more on that. It makes sense, anybody else?
So when you said this, at the same assessment value, it would be eight thousand?
No, I'm saying if, if right now, we're, we're looking at about forty-two hundred, let's say, is the assessment value for the overlay. If, if, if their portion of paving Ford Brook was about forty-two hundred and the city picks up the extra, if it's, say, was an eight thousand dollar per parcel, we'd pick up the extra. Additional that would be to turn that from gravel to blacktop.
What I was trying to do is to try to get a, just a rough ballpark about what it would be total to do, to do that whole cul-de-sac. Shane, would you think sixty-four thousand?
I haven't looked at it.
I'm, I'm just trying to take what, what the mayor's talking about and kind of just roughly come up with what those numbers would be.
Yeah, shooting from the hip, I mean, that, that might be a, a ballpark.
Yeah, obviously, we're not holding anything, but, but for discussion purposes, does it make sense to investigate that now before we finalize this? Then I think that also weighs into the, the consideration that if we're going to have a bond of any significance, what all do we wanna cover in that bond? But I'm just thinking that, that might be a good one to, to get to, to blacktop there and incorporate some of that, those homes into this assessment. I mean, I, I'm not sure how much we save having the equipment working there, but I know it'd be a lot, it would have seemed to me to be a lot cheaper than at some point in the future going out and trying to do that all by itself. You're working in the area, you're already assessing, you're.
Of course, you're already going in for their April, not anyway, you're already going in fifteen point two to April.
Yeah, but that, just that one street, it'd cost the city another forty to fifty thousand dollars, that's just not, and if you do it for them, then all of a sudden, the one's itself. Hey, we're over here, I want it. I think you gotta treat everybody the same and have a fifty-fifty assessment policy. I think we need to stick to that, or if it's somewhat close, it'd be something else, but.
Well, this is time to ask the question.
Mr. Mayor, would this be something that would be a consideration to have like a joint council road and bridge meeting on the sixteenth? And then that way, that would give a chance for us to talk with Bruce about bonding and find out green acres deferred? And then we can discuss about if you wanna include Ford Brook and.
Yeah, I think we've raised the questions and certainly would make sense to, to be able to go a little further with the road and bridge. Council's thoughts? Get the information on the tax deferred, tax exempt. Give a chance to give a better consideration of what Ford Brook would might cost, as you can do that in the winter or not.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could get an idea. You know, Joe said the, the ditches aren't very good. That creates a little bit of concern for me, um, you know, generally, I don't know if, does it pond water, Joe, or is it just? Is it, is there, is it pond water, which, to the point of creating soft spots in the road in the spring or?
No. There's yards right up through the road.
I could, I could certainly have a number with the council. I guess at, at your meeting this coming Tuesday, if you would like a, a full-blown feasibility report, um, or if you just wanna, you know, a quick memo with some estimated costs. You know, this is, it's probably roughly twice the time to, to put a feasibility report together versus a memo and, and estimate some costs. So maybe for something like that, five or six hundred bucks versus a thousand or twelve hundred, you know? Um, but if, if you could provide direction, we could prepare that in fairly short order of what you're looking for.
By the sixteenth? Council opinion?
I'd say it's worth looking at. If it came out.
Well, then, on Tuesday, then, uh, motion accordingly and, uh, direct Bruce to start putting some numbers together.
Yeah, we just need a memo, though, you don't need a report.
You're saying a memo at this point, or you're thinking a whole report at this point? Right.
Just a rap.
All right. So we'll clear that up with direction on Tuesday to get us information so we can follow up with road and bridge on sixteen. All right, we've got funding and capital improvement project.
Mr. Mayor, as we talked about during budget meetings, that there seemed to be a need to set up some sort of capital improvement fund that we could use for projects if and when they came, came together. Um, using the, uh, twenty-seventeen building inventory and what was recommended to set aside per year, um, and just adding in some other work. I just came up with a rough number of thirty thousand dollars to set aside into that fund. Um, we also talked about during the budget to, uh, set up a parks equipment improvement plan and that included in the twenty-eighteen budget, there was seventy-five hundred. Uh, knowing that it was suggested to purchase, to make some purchases in the next couple of years, that more funds would be required. So I was just looking at, that we could also transfer some money into that parks equipment fund. Um, some other thoughts was that to set up some sort of technology fund, as some things come together, um, an updated electronic sign, uh, shared internet if need be. Uh, there was some discussion about having the digitization of city documents, that we could put some money aside for that. And then there was a remainder of seventy-three thousand plus from the twenty-sixteen road and bridge fund that we could also, um, allocate for said projects. So I was just looking at, let's, um, after talking with Cory this spring, it's easy, it's a challenge on the accounting to, um, pay for, pay for, um, things that weren't specific, specific in the budget without having some money set aside like this, so that we, it's not affecting the overall budget. So it was a matter of, I think it's, we can take some money that's currently in checking and allocate it for, for projects that will need be needed down the road.
So your, your request is to put thirty thousand into, uh, building capital fund?
Mm-hmm.
You, you mean fund rather than plan, right?
Fund, yeah.
Twelve thousand five hundred into parks fund in addition to what we allocated for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Technology fund seventy-five hundred. With three thousand of that seventy-five hundred.
Going towards, that was the, the estimate that was provided, uh, to, to put together a plan to continue the digitization of the city documents.
And then take the road and bridge funds from last year.
Twenty-sixteen.
Twenty-sixteen and put some in the road improvement fund and some in the road equipment fund.
And that's, you know, just some numbers that were put together, there's, I, I just noticed in, it would be a conversation, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Cory yet, um, with having over, with the mon, current monies that are in the checking account, based on the budget, you know, there is the possibility to, you know, change those numbers around either up or down.
You're talking about some seed money, significant seed money to get those funds, something into those funds. All right. Having heard that, I'm gonna ask you, Cory, do you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, um, I can research into it substantially, but when you're talking about taking money from the so-called savings account, which there really isn't one, you also have to keep in mind our reserves. We always need to have the very minimal of six months' reserves for our budget. And given of what he's proposing, that's gonna reduce that, I mean, it will, we'll still have our six months, but should anything happen, that's probably gonna leave us with maybe four hundred thousand dollars in our money left for any emergency.
So, and again, if we set up funds like this, the money's still accessible.
Right.
If you didn't spend it on something else, right? So let's say there's thirty thousand put into the capital improvement fund and it's not spent, we have an emergency, well, one emergency is probably gonna be a capital. I mean, the furnace type thing. So I mean, that would be appropriate to use that fund anyway, rather than dip into the other four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, essentially. But then, given that you did already take a bunch of money from that to replace the furnace, you know, I mean, I guess I'm not really sure where you wanna go.
Well, let me, let me ask this, how difficult would it be, and maybe not by Tuesday, maybe by February, to using this as a, as a guideline? If we were to take these funds and transfer them, for you to be able to tell us what that would do to us as far as the, the six months and the, any extra, the four hundred thousand dollars that we might have? Because again, I, I think all of these would, would fall into the emergency, you know, maybe not road equipment. But road equipment, if we did have an emergency, we'd have a fund for it to go into that. But if, if we could ask you to look into the consequences of this. But if, if we could ask you to look into the consequences of this, and as our treasurer make a recommendation based on the request to pursue that, would that be reasonable to do by the November, or the February meeting?
Yes. One comment I would have to say is the technology fund. Basically, that's not classified as capital improvement fund. So sometimes it's difficult to just create funds like that with the state auditor with their chart of accounts. So you might have to rethink how you would do that, because I don't think you can just create a fund specific to this, not just a general operating fund.
The other ones, though, would be, from your understanding?
Well, yeah, there's, if it's for the capital, like the park equipment, that's a capital improvement. And then the building, it's, you know, that's more of a capital improvement. But just a technology fund for the sake of having money to purchase or put the building official to digitize, that's not a capital. It wouldn't be classified as a capital fund.
That being said, could we set, could we make a fund for that purposes, or an account for that purposes, knowing that we weren't set?
It would be under a general fund, the general fund as one of the account numbers. But it would be just more of an operating. It wouldn't be a standalone fund where you're putting money into it every year and then you just pay. The auditor gets very funny about that kind of stuff. And, and if he sees something like that, he wouldn't be probably too pleased to have it.
Oh, we could, we could ask him where that might make sense, or investigate that further.
Correct.
Does that, would that satisfy your request here, if we were to give her a month to put that together, boys?
Yeah, it was just, you know, it brought up that it's easier to take, take that money out, to have that money already set aside, that's what, when Cory and I were talking about it, to have that money already set aside. So I just figured, since we talked about it before, we, here's kind of what you wanted to get.
Yeah, it's nice to know that it's, it's there and you're not overspending the general fund, and you do have an emergency, you know. So it'd be nice to have some funds there for emergency or for planned expenses that we're building up, like the mower, so you can start putting some money aside for that. So if you're okay with that, if you will then motion accordingly on Tuesday to... Anybody else on that?
So we're going to table this until February?
Well, he'll motion to, to direct Cory to investigate it, yeah, but there won't be any action until February, when Cory's had a chance to look at the consequences. Make sense? All right. I don't know what to do with the next one. Mary's not here to explain it.
Mr. Mayor, the only question that I have is, you know, in, in all retrospect, you know, my interpretation, she's asking for quarterly reports, you know, specific to the hockey rink. I understand, you know, we, we should capture some costs to kind of know what, you know, it is costing us. We know that the first few years is obviously going to be greater than the next and next. But to me, I don't think we need to do it quarterly. Obviously, in the summertime, we're not doing anything with it. Why do we need staff to track time? Do we need a piece of paper that has nothing on it? You know, I would, I would, if we're going to do it, I would recommend that we do it when there's some activity going on with the rink, not necessarily just a quarterly report, to have a quarterly report.
Well, I agree with you, you know, when, when we've been asking neighboring cities about things, you know, St. Francis has been evaluating the cost of, you know, maintaining hockey and ice surfaces, and how they're going to pay for that. I think it's a reasonable thing. I think certainly, since the person who wrote this isn't here to discuss it, we should bring it up on Tuesday. It's appropriate to attract, to track cost, isn't necessary to be done quarterly?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant?
I kind of read it differently. We already passed, we already talked about previously and said that we were going to get quarterly reports, and it would look to me more like it was just at making sure that the recreational rink or ice was added into this.
Well, and, and again, at this point, there's no reason we can't look at that and say, is there a reason we need to do quarterly reports?
Well, I think that's the question we asked Mary on Tuesday, because I don't think anybody hears me, unless anybody knows anything more about it than that.
I agree with Paul about this. Originally, it was supposed to, she wanted these reports because it was budgeting. Well, really, to me, a report once a year at the end of the year, like everything else, we, that's the information we use for budgeting for the following, for the next year or so. I think I want, once a year reports, that kind of.
All right. Fire services.
Mr. Mayor?
Charles R. Ricker.
I wanted to, you know, obviously present to the council that, you know, currently the way we have things structured is we're charging for emergency services. We do budget for, both for the sheriff's contract and we do budget for an operating budget for the fire department. And then above and beyond that, we do charge our residents for fire calls, or emergency service calls, no matter what that is. To me, in a lot of ways, I think we're, we're in an essence, double charging. If you look at the report that Cory gave us tonight on the, on the budget, we, budget for receiving $8,500 for fire calls paid, and we received 4,200, so we're about 4,300 short of that. So it's, if you look at 4,200 is what we're receiving on receipts for fire calls, it's not a real significant amount. And if you look at, I've attached, obviously, what, all the background information as far as fire service, what we charge for, whatnot. So I guess it's, in my opinion, that we take a look and, at that, and, and not charge for, you know, the normal calls, I guess, if you will. Obviously, I think we would need to set up, set some guideline or some type of rules up where there are certain calls you do get charged for. If it's an illegal burn, if you have a burning permit, you're burning, you know, items that you're not supposed to be burning, you know, and the department's called out for that, there are issues where you do get charged. If you have an illegal business, doesn't have an IUP or CUP and you have a fire, you know, those are, would be, in my opinion, billable offenses. But other than that, I don't think we should be charging our residents for, for emergency service calls. I do know that, you know, there have been some circumstances that people don't want to call because they know they're going to get billed, and I don't think that's right. So again, I propose that we take a look at that and eliminate that and come up with some type of guideline of what actually is a valid billable.
So let me, let me clarify. So you're asking with this RCA that we, we set up the discussion to define what's billable and what's not billable?
Yes, basically, I would...
Rather than just drop that immediately, discuss what it would be going for.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the action you're, you're...
Correct.
Okay, I don't disagree with that. I, I would say the difference, I, I don't necessarily agree we're double charging our residents. We did investigate with the sheriff's department whether we could bill, because in some cases, it's the same alarms going off, it's the same houses getting all the calls, and we said, gosh, if the sheriff has to go out the same house 10 times, can't we charge for that? That state statute, we can't.
Yeah.
So that was one of the differences there, or we, because we tried that there, too. I mean, if you're getting all the calls, you should, if you're bar none and you're getting all the calls, you should pay more. But as far as, I think that what we are charging right now really covers the equipment, the fire station, the trucks, and the training. That's, that's what most of it. And our intent was when we, we realized that most insurance companies do have coverage in there for a fire call, typically 500, 550 dollars. We found out that with a rider, you could, could do about 2,000. I'd, in that discussion, I'd like to at least have that discussion saying, if it is consistent that homeowners' policies do have 500, if there is a, I'll call to your house, I'd at least like to attempt to recover that from the insurance companies. But I would save that for the discussion on what's chargeable and what isn't. And, and then take a look at, as you say, right now, we recovered half of what we budgeted. You know, is that a reasonable thing to keep expecting, or? And then I think it's, it's reasonable to say from a, a commercial standpoint, if you've got a bigger commercial business, you know, we just had our fire inspection down at Ramsey at our company, where the fire marshal comes through and checks for code violations and a variety of things that the fire department needs us as business owners to have in place to minimize cost. I think we could take a look at something like that in our businesses, or consider that there certainly is more high risk if, if you've got volatile materials at your property. But I, in that discussion, I'd like to see how does commercial versus residential fit into that, too.
And, and again, part, part of it is, is I have heard, you know, that there are a lot of residents who tend not to call because they know they're going to get a bill, and I don't think that's right.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that if, if you're looking at it saying, if my house is on fire, 500 on my, paid by my insurance company is not as bad a deal.
You know, and I'm not saying, you know, more often than not, if your house is on fire, you're going to call.
Yeah.
That's just the way it is. I'm talking about, you know, heart attacks, strokes, you know, the more medical things, you know?
Right. And I think that's, that's what's reasonable to discuss at that.
And, and, because again, we had an incident out on 22 where a young gal was driving eastbound and a trailer came off, tire came off a trailer of a truck going westbound and hit her truck, and she got a bill for that, and I don't agree with that. And those are the circumstances, I'm saying. There's obviously certain circumstances I think we need to come up with that are billable.
Yep.
And others that are definitely not.
And so at this point, that's what you're asking, that we set up a meeting to discuss that?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant?
Question for how we're going forward is then, are we going to discuss it further on Tuesday, or should we have a proposal for what should and shouldn't be built?
No, my understanding is Paul's asking that we authorize that discussion, that we, we set aside some time to go very specifically on what's billable and what isn't.
All right.
And what's the amount if something is billable?
Okay.
At a separate time other than Tuesday.
Yeah, we as a council need to determine what that is.
Yeah. All right. Let me ask again, are you saying you would like a, a defined date to discuss if COLA or not, and if so, how much? Or are you saying you want it to, automatic, November 1st, there's an automatic COLA?
My inter, or my meaning of this is for, just for us to set a specific date for us to, to either award or not award, you know, to discuss, you know, obviously, again, by, have information to us presented by staff by the October meeting, so we can discuss, you know, giving a COLA increase by November 1st.
Okay. So you're not saying make it automatic, have the information so we can discuss it?
Correct.
And make a decision by the...
Correct.
So, so...
The, the meeting in...
On, on the...
The November meeting.
November meeting, we either say we're going to give this or we're not.
All right, any other questions on that?
So, Mr. Mayor, then, there's actually, there'd be two things to be done. One, to have the information available ahead of time, and then to, because would there be two meetings then?
What, what the request here is to have staff gather information prior to the October meeting, and then you want a decision actually by the November meeting, rather than November 1st?
Correct. So the direction is to have staff get us information from surrounding areas of COLA increases of lake cities by the October meeting, so we can discuss it at that meeting. And then by the November 1st meeting, we make a decision if we are going to...
So the first meeting in November?
Correct.
Rather than November 1st? All right, any other questions on that? Deputy Clerk Salvy Range. Now Cory sent us out an email today. We have 12 applicants for the position, currently making anywhere from 1150 to $25 an hour, 20, I'm sorry, 2862 an hour, and requesting anywhere from 14 to 26, 44, 27, sorry. Surprisingly, the 2862 is not there. I think, you know, we, the council, Cory said we're undecided on the salary range. I guess we didn't define the salary range, we're posting it depending on qualifications. I'm open to the right qualifications to say, if we've got the right person, this is what's going to take to begin here, I'm, I'm open to consideration of that. I think that we look at adjusting the compensation range when we see what it's going to take to fill it, rather than expanding it and then, and taking somebody who is willing to work for $18 an hour and say, but you could go up to 28 or 30. I, you know, I think that in the interview process, we don't chase anybody away. We say, if you're that good, you know, we go to the council and make it happen. Would be my opinion. Rather than expand it before we know what the true qualifications of these are. Are you any more excited about any of these than you were?
Yeah, there is a few tentative, but what I'm thinking that we need to probably do is, if the council can make a decision on allowing the two council members and myself to approve if we're going to be interviewing these people and stuff, approve negotiating and offering, and then presenting to the council the final offer. Because I, I think if we're going to be, it's going to be until March before we get anybody then. Because are we going to go to the council and say, well, we'd like to offer this, what did you thought? And then we go back to the applicant and then they say, no, no, I want this, and then we're supposed to wait another meeting? So I think...
You're just saying, basically, we're not going to change this chart yet, but you want the people doing the interview to be able to work with you and say, this is an all-star candidate, or we want to be able to offer them what it takes.
Right, and, and the reason for showing the chart, though, too, is that this is what the rates are currently, and based off of what we're getting for applicants, I think that the council should be able to move outside of that range if we feel that we've got decent applicants as far as offering a wage.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant?
I, you know, certainly, one of the challenges I have, I mean, nothing against Cory, was not seeing the resumes, I don't, you know, how, you know, and obviously, you can't necessarily match them up to see how, the different qualifications. But yeah, I would think that when it came down to it, if, you know, if we found the right person, then we needed to make adjustments, then that's what we need to do.
Mr. Mayor, the council had already made the decision that me, Paul, and Jeff would be reviewing all the applicants and doing the interviews. So that was where the decision was, is that if you guys allowed the three of us to, the ability to offer more.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying, that's not what, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying, without going through each individual one, I don't know the individual qualifications, so I don't know...
You don't know how valid these numbers are.
I don't know the difference between somebody who's asking for 14 and somebody who's asking 28.
Well, in, in all honesty, though, by looking at a resume, you, in my opinion, you don't know how valid it is if somebody's asking for 40 bucks an hour, you know, just by looking at a piece of paper. That piece of paper could say a, a little or a lot, but again, until you actually sit down and talk to them and interview them, you're not going to really get a true appreciation of what they're worth made of, made out of here.
What I hear Corey say is, will the council consider the judgment of Corey, Paul, and myself to evaluate that, what we see in the resume and what we see in the interview, to say whether we think it's worth going above and beyond what our current pay scales?
Really, all our pay scales are outwacked. If you look at compared to Columbus's 2016, their pay scales were way lower. If we were at what they were in 2016, we would probably be close to being in range of what some of these people are asking.
Well, and I also believe if our range was higher, we may, may have been, I'm not saying we could have, but we may have been able to retain the person we had.
I think what the request is pretty straightforward at this point. Do we wanna let Paul and Corey and I make that call? Right? So that will be the action item on Tuesday. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryant.
Most adjourned.
Second that, meeting adjourned.
Yeah, that's the sewer gas. Joey will come here tomorrow.
Is that my rubber band over there?
More water in the traps.
Yes.
Yeah, that's probably why.
Alright, we'll sit here at first. Then I thought, well, there's only the three of us to be sitting there. It's a bit overwhelming.
So you told them about that?
Yeah, before he left. Because we used to have that problem when we actually...
Oh, I do have one there. There was two of them there.
Yeah, say, 'cause man, suddenly it's... I was gonna blame Grant.
I think I scanned it, but I mean, I was just... I don't know those things, and I'm just like, I don't know what to say.
How's it going with that one?
It's going pretty good.